Good evening, everyone. The May thirteenth Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission is now in session. We all please rise and recite our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in every way, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, all commissioners with the exception of Mr. Maury Bishop are present. Staff introduction, please.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsay Amanda, Legal Counsel for Planning and Zoning.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Rhonda Bro, Engineering.
Jason Taylor, Engineering.
Brief Chairman comments. Last time, we had a discussion in reference to some proposal for subdivision. I provided some comments and, of course, had an earlier discussion. I think one of the things I'd like to say that we're going to be challenged in our environment, infrastructure, ecologically, with the growth of the parish. At some point, we will need to understand, we need to prepare. All of those utilities and those things in our parish will be challenged. Be it the public, the planning, it will be a group task to understand. We need to prepare ourselves for the growth, the rapid growth, in this parish to provide for that growth. Those are my comments. You want to do that now? Okay. Okay. As a matter of record, there were two items on the zoning portion of the meeting. Those items will be postponed and moved to a later date. If any of you are here for that, again, those two items on the zoning side have been postponed, moved to a later date.
The ones on Weber City. Another one's Church on 431.
This one, these two.
Okay, what are they? On the zoning review for, what is that? Weber City?
Yeah.
And the other ones located on Highway 431. If any of you are here for those items, again, they have been postponed to a later date in the zoning portion of the meeting. That being said, let's move forward with our agenda. Can I get a motion for approval or denial for the minutes of the previous meeting, April 8?
I move for approval.
I second the minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Full of denial for a meeting with April 8th, Joint Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'll move for approval of that also.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion has been second, all in favor?
Aye.
So noted, pass unanimously. We have quite a few items on consent agenda. Is there any reason we can't look at them as a group or does it warrant individual discussion?
I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
As a whole?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second.
Are we only moving to approve the items that have not been?
Yeah, the items that are still on the agenda that haven't been crossed out.
That's it.
Motion has, the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, motion passes unanimously. All right. Item 9A, family partition. Gary J. and Monica Blue drove property.
I'm Seth Mosby, I'm the surveyor for this piece of property.
You have any comments?
No, sir. I'm here seeking approval for the family partition.
Staff?
Staff made comments and all comments have been addressed. We recommend approval contingent upon all lot owners that use the existing private servitude of access signing the plat and they have put blanks on the plat for that.
Any comments from commissioners? At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public hearing. Any comments? This time, we close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I recommend approval of this family partition.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
So noted unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9B, Rayne and Bro Properties.
James Faugre representing Earls and Associates and Ms. Bro in the following family partition. I believe there was one comment made, but it was corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
Staff?
Staff recommends approval at this time.
Any comments from commissioners? At this time, we'd like to open the floor for public hearing. This time, we close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So noted unanimously. 9C, Louis E. Russo, Jr. and Properties.
Representing Earls and Associates and Mr. Russo on the following family partition. I think one comment was made, it was corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
Staff comments?
Staff recommends approval.
Discussing from commissioners? This time, we open the floor for public hearing.
William Scott.
Good evening. William Scott lives on Lake Shore in the adjoining neighborhood. I'm not here to ask you to approve or deny this request, just wanted to point out that that is a sensitive piece of property to the folks in our neighborhood and we're very concerned about the future of that property and I asked that you would move forward with due diligence about what is the intention of the folks in this family dividing this property. Again, the access to the property is through our neighborhood, that's the only access from our view unless there's some access over off 74. But again, it's a very sensitive piece of property to all of us. It's between our neighborhood and the interstate. There was a blurb in the paper this morning about a potential interchange at Highway 74 and that piece of property appears to be very, very valuable going forward and I would ask that you would please pay close attention to what happens with that property as it pertains to our needs and we'd like to do whatever we can to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood and we are very sensitive to the amount of traffic coming in and out of that neighborhood and what the potential is for that property, please. Thank you.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes.
Do you have any specific concern that we may?
There's a mobile home in there right now. If you look at the property, it is, the access to the property is off of West Lake Shore. Our neighborhood is an oval and the only access is off 621 on Eds, comes into the neighborhood. You have to drive right past, right through our entranceway there. That's the only access that I know of today. We're very concerned about that property being subdivided and mobile homes or whatever being put in there and all that traffic having to come in through the entrance of our neighborhood. Very, very concerned about it. I know that a number of folks, I'd anticipated a larger crowd here, but I think six o'clock was tough for them to get here. But I'm speaking really open mouth myself and a couple of the guys in the neighborhood that are concerned. I know that the sign has been up for a couple of weeks about this, about the meeting and I'm not sure that the word got out to the rest of the neighborhood. Again, I'm very concerned about it. Any other questions?
And your name is?
William Scott, 37260 South Lake Shore Avenue.
Is that mobile home visible from West Lake Shore?
You can see it, there's a fence, a wooden fence, I think that they, you know, put up to obscure it a little bit, but it is, you can see the mobile home as you turn.
What about the other, the other two lots that are, well, one's behind the lot where the mobile home is and then one's farther down?
I haven't had an opportunity to.
Is it kind of wooded as you go down South Lake Shore, behind the houses on South Lake Shore?
Well, on South Lake Shore, yeah, there's pasture, it's beginning to grow up behind it.
Ricky, our staff, what's the density for RM?
Three units per acre?
It's three units per acre. As of right now, they really couldn't, they couldn't exceed one unit per lot that's subdivided right now without subdividing it further, right?
Correct.
Okay. But they could since it's only three lots.
Correct.
So really, the only impact you'll see as of this subdivision is three.
Okay.
Individual homes, whether they be mobile homes or houses. I don't think we can control that.
Understand. Thank you.
The person living in the mobile home now is one of the daughters who will be building on the lot directly south of it, the Z3, she's building a house. And the other daughter, the other daughter's gonna be moving into the mobile home.
What about Z1, what's that, that she's gonna?
That's, yeah, they have no intention of subdividing.
They just want to?
Well, they give their daughter wants to build a house, so they gotta cut out a lot for their daughter.
Right.
Can't give one child something and not give the other ones.
As of right now, you can't put more than three new residents back here.
Anything other than this, you'd have to go before y'all anyway, it could be a private servitude passage.
Right. So I think you can go with confidence that it's just gonna be some family houses on a family partition.
At most, you're looking at four, four if that, total.
Okay.
Any further comments, public hearing? Gentleman back there?
I'm Doug White, I'm the president of Homeowners Association and the fence that was put up was put up by our association. The property does drain into a common lake that we own. The drainage needs to be addressed and it drains out straight to the interstate. We're fixing to have to do a little construction to correct that matter and like him, I would say due diligence in what now and future plans are.
Well, I know with this kind of family partition, there isn't much that we can do with drainage on our part.
And look, I understand that part.
Right.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
In response to that?
As far as drainage?
Yes.
That's out of my expertise, I'm a surveyor, not an engineer. I wouldn't think this is gonna impact the drainage on the neighboring property, I wouldn't assume.
Are there any other comments? Floor's still open, public hearing. Any comment?
Yes, sir.
For those of you who have not filled out a card, would you do so, please?
Yeah. I didn't have any idea what I was supposed to do here. That's my piece of property, that's my kids.
Ask him for his name and?
I asked you.
Your name?
Louis Russo.
Residence, place of residence?
He's a landowner.
Landowner, yeah.
He's a landowner.
That's unimproved pasture, I mean, it's been there forever and it drains the way it drains. I mean, they built a neighborhood in a natural drainage. Because I just wanted, I've got four kids, as of right now, two got their act together, they're ready to have a residence, the other two don't, that's why I'm cutting it in three. When the other two get straight, I'll cut the other half, give them one.
It sounds fair.
Any further comments, floor is open, public hearing. No further comments, at this time, floor is closed for public hearing.
I move for approval of the family partition.
Second.
In motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? So noted, unanimous, approved.
Thank you.
9D has been pulled, 9E, Mary Delat Properties.
Representing Ms. Mary Delat on the family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Staff?
An email was sent yesterday regarding this family partition with respect to the private access servitude. So we were putting the ball in your court to make a decision on this. The error was on our side, we missed it when we were making the review and he didn't have time, you know, we didn't have time to address it, we didn't want to interrupt the process and so that's why we brought it to you guys to make that decision.
Can I pass something out to you?
Yes, sir. So this is yours too, Uncle Clint? This is yours too? Y'all did this? Gotcha.
This is the lot right here, the lot of things.
This is an old map showing any kind of servitudes going through?
This is possibly what was subdivided in 1968.
Thank you.
It shows a 30-foot servitude, a 40-foot servitude going to Bayou Conway. The purpose of this servitude was created.
Go on the microphone.
Where do you see servitude?
Purpose of this, you see on side of Lot 7 going through east-west on Track 6. It was created because they would not give each landowner, wouldn't allow each landowner to create, put a bridge across the property, access to the rear of their property. So this servitude was created only for these rear tracks to access their servitude, to access the rear of their property. So now, we're extending off of this to do a legitimate family partition and we're asking for approval.
So that's?
It's a rare occasion for.
That's where you show the existing 40-foot servitude.
That's correct. It's been there, like I said, before the Land Development Code was established in 1968 with this survey map.
One of the questions I had, and I kind of understood that that was their question as well, was the, you're splitting that 30-foot servitude of passage between lots 7 and 6. 15's on one side, 15's on, 15 foot's on 7, C and 7B?
Yeah, they're gonna be signing the map as well to agree to servitude, to extend it.
But they're not signing the map that we have.
The Alfred Roper Jr.?
That's who would have to sign, so if they sign that, that turns over the servitude from their lots, the 30-foot, are they giving up 15-foot?
Yeah.
Access servitude by signing that, okay. That was my question, that's what I understood their question to me as well.
Yeah, this was brought, what was it, six months ago or something like that? Another family partition was brought aboard for, I think, Lots 7C and 7B and was approved, but it fell through, it didn't proceed, they didn't follow through with it, it didn't have fallen through. So Ms. Mary Delat owns this whole remaining piece and she's just dividing it up between her kids.
So what happens if?
This is just track 6 on this old map, is it?
No, it goes to 6 and it goes to Bayou Conway and it's for, it's written in the legal for everybody along. Lots 5, 4, 3, 2, and 1 to have access to the rear of their properties.
No, no, but the family partition just includes track 6.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's just the rear portion of Track 6.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Clint, so what if you go to the courthouse and you try to pull a map for Lot 7C, will you see that servitude recorded in the courthouse?
No, we're proposing it with this.
So you won't see it, if you go to pull 7C, you won't see that 15-foot?
Yeah.
That they gave and signed? That seems kind of different.
Different.
I don't know if that, that just doesn't seem typical. I don't know, it seems like you'd have to almost include that lot in there, is that not the case?
7C included into what?
Into what you're proposing to subdivide here, all on one map.
Well, they're gonna be signing off and agreeing to that 15-foot to be on to their track.
Okay.
It's an existing track as it sits.
Does that handle what we needed to handle as far as?
Generally speaking, when he submits the predeals servitude agreement, that predeals servitude will tie Lot 7C to that 15-foot servitude, so if somebody does a property records search, it'll pull the original plat for 7C and it'll show a 15-foot encumbrance for access for these other properties.
That's the fancy way of asking what I was trying to find out.
Okay.
Bottom line, it does meet the minimum requirement of 30-foot servitude access.
Yes, sir.
Any further comments from commissioners? This time, we'll open the floor for public hearing. No comments, at this time, we close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion for approval, move for approval.
I'll second the motion.
It has been motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
That motion, that is with that contingency in place, right?
Yes.
With it being signed on the plat, I guess since it's part of it, that's included.
Public hearing to approve or deny Pelican Crossing 4, 5, and 6.
Hello, my name is Derek Murphy, we're quality engineering and surveying, representing inquest level development, developers for Pelican Crossing filings 4 through 6. We come before you tonight asking approval for Pelican Crossing filings 4 through 6. This project was originally slated for design since the original conception of this development. Filens 1 through 3, this was always gonna be the next, the next thing to do and this is where we at right now. The same owner owned the property for all six filings and this was always his intent with master plans going back into the, you know, for many, many years. This project was designed with the latest subdivision regulations in mind. Went through great links, the developer went through great links to meet with homeowners of the original, the existing Pelican Crossings, first filing, second, third filings, had several meetings, we've had a meeting, we had a meeting with residents of Pelican Crossing where we had close to 60 people show up, answer questions and answer, we did a presentation, answered a lot of their questions. Our goal there was to work in conjunction with them, not against them. We, things were talked about like helping with the entrance, they're having some trouble with the maintenance, helping those guys with fountains, lighting, landscaping, there's a lot of talk about homeowners association, making them have the same restrictions, things like that, things that we want to be, to be a good neighbor. And that with the council member, had him involved in these discussions with those homeowners. Some of the things that came out, you've seen a lot of probably verbiage back and forth between us and staff and things that we tried to work out and help in this area. Let's talk about traffic. Traffic study that we had talked about, we needed to have a right turn lane into Pelican Crossing Drive from Highway 44. We committed to doing that, it also needed a right turn lane out of Pelican Crossing Drive, we're gonna do that as part of the fifth filing as indicated. We've also know that there's a lot of traffic up and down Highway 44 and this corridor altogether. We worked out something with the staff, Ricky, do you want to go through this? Where the developer has agreed to do basically a contract with the parish, if you will, to do one of three options. One of those options is to provide the design, engineer, and permit a roundabout at Luce Moore and Highway 44 as part of our traffic assessment due to the fact that our traffic study does show that we affect this intersection. The issue with that is if the timing doesn't work, we've also, as a backup plan, offered a traffic assessment depending on $750 a lot, if we pay it up front, or $1,000 a lot, we'll pay 500 at the final plat, 500 at the building, pulling the building. So these are some things that we're trying to work in this area to ensure that we help traffic. We know we didn't cause the problem as there's issues now, but we feel that it is our, you know, duty in this area to try to fix it because we are gonna contribute to getting a little worse. So we work in that through, we have a draft copy of it right now, working with staff. Drainage, we're detained for a 25-year storm in this area. Ponds got, we submitted this plat last year, our ponds have increased significantly, we were at close to 370-something lots, or 370 lots before, this is at 343. We've lost some lots due to the increased pond sizes, but we want to make sure the parish had talked to us about doing the 25-year storm, we do have an approved drainage impact study. The lot sizes in this development range from 80-foot along the existing Pelican Crossing filings down to 53-foot. All of these lot sizes are allowed in RM zoning. In fact, we're required to have at least three different lot sizes and we have four. What we want to make sure is, is that we put the larger lots next to the existing Pelican Crossing and then we strategically place the smaller lots as far away from the existing homes as possible in order to show stages where we have the larger houses along Pelican Crossing and the smaller houses away from them. We have, as part of, because some of the homeowners in Pelican Crossing showed some concern on 53 lots, whereas you know in a smaller lot, a lot of times you look down, you see garage doors all up and down, up and down the road. One thing we've offered to do was do what we basically call a side-loaded garage on a small lot. That's why you see something in here about a waiver on the 53-foot lot. On a 53-foot lot, as we got on here, you have to have a side setback of five foot. What we're trying to do is still maintain the 10-foot but have three foot on one side and seven foot on the other in order to make that turn into that garage, it's a little tight, you can imagine. And so, we're trying to ask for that in order to satisfy some of the concerns of the homeowners when we met with them, so we wouldn't have that, we wouldn't have that, you know, that door, as you say, we would actually have some brick and that kind of stuff.
So all of these one, all of these lots where there's a setback requested is for that side-loading garage?
Yes, sir.
Even the 64, 70, and 80-foot lots setbacks that you're looking for, because there's two different colors on them.
Right, well, what happens is because the 53-foot lot's a butt, another sized lot, we want to make sure we maintain that 10-foot separation. So if we, if we just have a three-foot and then a 60-foot lot only has a six-foot, that's only a nine-foot separation. So what we did was, we wanted, our goal there is not really to bypass the distance between the homes, but just offset it on the lot a little bit in order to help that turn in. So we want to maintain, the reason you got a different color is we want to maintain that 10-foot separation between those homes.
Well, right now, the standard is five-foot setback on each side?
Correct.
You're just taking that five-foot setback and you?
Redistributing it, three and seven.
Redistributing it, three foot on one side, seven on the other.
Right, so you still got, you still got the 10-foot between the homes. The other thing we worked hard with was to make sure, we worked, we're putting stage three parks in here, knowing the development code, we got fishing piers, we got pedestrian bridge, walking trails, that kind of stuff to enhance this development. We showing all those, I mean, these things are, as part of this approval tonight, we have to build these, we want to build these, so we're not just putting out there some green space, we're actually putting some parks and some amenities that these homeowners can use and be a part and be effective. Large lakes, we're putting, you know, basically a pedestrian bridge with a fishing pier, you know, that's above and beyond, I guess, because we're actually still above the minimum on parks. So I'm happy with this design, I think we come through, we meet the codes, the only time we don't is when we're trying to satisfy some of the homeowners and doing the J-turn. So we asking tonight for your approval and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
I have one question about the HOA, is this gonna be part of the existing HOA, it's all gonna be one homeowners association?
Well, we don't know how all that works right now because the existing developer, from my understanding, and some of these guys probably tell you better than us, there is no, there's one filing without HOA, they have different HOAs themselves, the first filing separate from the second and third. So our goal would be if not to have the same HOA, you know, the same architectural type standards and that kind of stuff. We would like to have the same HOA, but it's just a matter of how it all works out dynamically. We would like to have the same HOA, but it's just a matter of how it all works out dynamically.
Is it, is the subdivision, the first, second, and third filing been turned over to the HOA yet? Or is it still controlled by the developer?
I think, I think one of them has, has been.
No, I heard a no.
No, okay. Well, it has not been. I know they're separate, separated by filing, so.
Staff, notice your recommendation contingent on responding to your queries.
What you received tonight was a subsequent revision after the packet had gone out. And I believe that all of our comments have been addressed with regards to the plat. We got the agreement today, which you've also received in front of you. We made a revision. They've agreed to the, the revision, and so that's in front of you as a, you know, it's not final because it's not signed, but that is in general what the thing is gonna read like and look like. At, at this time, we recommend approval because the traffic, we believe the traffic requirements are being met, the drainage requirements being met, and the plat meets to the code satisfaction.
Ricky, the, um, the contract, um, I thought you guys were very, were, um, used a lot of, um, a lot of good ideas here to put that together. Uh, is the idea to go with the, um, with the roundabout first? That's, that's the first option?
Ideally, the roundabout gets us to a point where we have a shovel-ready project that we can bring to DOTD, that they're gonna work hand-in-hand with DOTD to start to solve the problem with Highway forty-four. With the Conway Plantation Project in the city and Edenborn in the city, we're working once again with those as much as we can because there is a problem, and it's gonna grow exponentially as these developments come online. And this developer stepped up to the plate and said, "I'm willing to either pay an impact fee, an assessment fee, so that you guys can design and build and, and help to pay for this roundabout, or we will take on that as the front end so that y'all can push the effort on the back end." And yes, that is our primary option. That's why it's number one on the list.
Who's done the, uh, the, uh, analysis to determine that the roundabout solves the traffic problem?
As I understand it, I'm not a traffic guy, I'm gonna defer to Jason, but as I understand it, there are studies ongoing right now that DOTD is working on that shows that that intersection of Luce Moore and forty-four needs to be more continuous flow and not a stop situation.
Jason, do you have any comments?
The initial, um, the initial sidra run, the modeling shows that it will work, that it effectively, uh, allows traffic to flow through the area, uh, much better than it's flowing now. It allows Luce Moore to get out, it allows, uh, Conway Plantation to come in and not adversely affect Pelican Point or Pelican Crossing. This is our best option without having to four or five-lane forty-four right now. So, um, this is, this is huge to me.
Does it, does it completely mitigate the addition of the, uh, of these three phases?
And then some.
Okay. I, I mean, that's the question everybody here's gonna wanna know, and certainly we wanna know. I'm, I'm a big fan of roundabouts, by the way. I know they do work. People do have to get used to them, but, um, so right now, rather than live with the situation, a roundabout would, a roundabout with these three phases in place would create a better traffic flow than, than we're current, currently experiencing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we're not talking about the developer building out a roundabout. We're talking about, I think Ricky said the word, it's, the developers willing to pay the engineering fee to design the roundabout.
And permit it, and it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a DOTD project.
The, uh, if I may?
Yeah.
Um, the initial, um, proposal for this particular roundabout came from DOTD as a, as a concept. Um, they, they know it's a problem. They know, um, they know we have issues there. So, um, they're, they're trying to work, we're trying to, they're trying to work with us in getting things done. One of the suggestions was that if we could design it, they could easily get it through the system. I, I know we've all worked with DOTD and, and how long it takes for them to go through their process. It's just designed into the system that way. If this happens, um, where we have everything through permitting, it becomes a permit project, and that happens much more quickly than the six years that it takes to get a project going through DOTD through their own process.
So this is a DOTD-funded construction project?
It's not officially funded yet, but we're, we're working on that, yes.
Well, here's the thing. I mean, the, the, the design and permitting and all doesn't do anything to help the traffic until it's actually built, so.
But, but it seems like that would be the best option out of these three because, I mean, if you just,
I agree with that.
If you put half a million dollars.
Doesn't, doesn't start helping until it's built.
Right. It'll get sped up.
Well, and then I'd like to say one thing. Basically, I, you know, part of this is if we are trying to get it permitted for a year, if it goes DOTD, the parish can take it over, or will take it over, and, and push it through DOTD as a parish project at that point, basically, to try to help speed this up. But this is a win-win for, for both situations.
I can imagine collecting impact fees and half a million dollars sitting in the bank is gonna sit there for a long time without anything actually moving, taking the initiative to get some plans out and designed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so as far as the traffic impact study's concerned, you guys are meeting the traffic impact study with all the turn lanes that we're putting in, the right turn lane out, the right turn lane that's on the northbound, northbound?
Correct. And we're, we're gonna handle, that's basically, uh, at our development, we're gonna mitigate any delays we have with two turn lanes at the entrance of Pelican Crossing, and then this will mitigate off-site improvements.
Cause they didn't tell you what kinda improvements in the traffic impacts that they do at Luce Moore. They just said it needed improvements.
They, they talked about, uh, the increases that, that this development would have at total build-out.
Okay.
And so we trying everything with the fifth filing because the fourth filing didn't really make any impacts as far as Pelican Crossing, the, uh, entrance or Luce Moore, but when you hit, start hitting the fifth filing, the impacts start going, going up.
Getting a set of, getting a set of plans designed sounds like a huge step forward for that intersection.
Yeah.
Been needed for a long time.
Although it's out, outside, I mean, it's not part of the parish, the Conway and Edenborn, which is the downstream plug for traffic, what, what's the number of lots and, that we're looking at there?
You know, all I know is what's been published in the paper. Off the top of my head, I know it's two hundred multifamily units, and is it nine hundred, nine hundred single-family units in Conway? And Derek might be able to give us a good idea on Edenborn for the single-family portion.
About a hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty, and then there's gonna be a multifamily component eventually there, so I would imagine at least another three hundred. So four sixty and eleven hundred, so another sixteen hundred.
Three sixty, I'm sorry.
Three sixty.
We still have fifteen hundred lots.
A considerable number of units when you consider that we still have, uh, the Riverton T and D that we know is gonna come back up, asking for a different, uh, set of approvals. We know that the back nine at Pelican Point is gonna come back because they're gonna lot that and turn that into more lots. So you're looking at, you know, three thousand lots down the forty-four corridor in the next ten years, which is potentially, you know, ten percent of our entire population coming down forty-four in the next ten years.
And they have buyers for all these lots. People are ready to buy. It's insane.
That's why, in our opinion, stepping up to the plate and saying, "We're willing to do this for an off-site improvement, and what we're gonna do when we hit every one of these developers is say, where are you gonna take us for off-site improvements? If, if it's a per-lot fee, then right now we've settled at a thousand dollars per lot, and it's five hundred when you get your final plat approved, and five hundred for each CO, and this developer said if we don't do that, since we're the builder and the developer, we'd, we'd much rather pay seven fifty all at the final plat." Basically, the check, the parish gets a bigger check. In our minds, money helps us move projects forward, helps us maybe hire consultants to look at, you know, where do we widen to four lands? How much is right-of-way acquisition gonna cost? What is the ultimate cross-section gonna be? And in, in my opinion, this is the best-case scenario right now for solving the traffic in that area. Cause it's not gonna be solved with one development.
Best I've seen yet.
Ricky, last year, we spent a lot of time, and you guys spent a lot of time and effort putting together the new subdivision regulations. Would you say that what's been laid out here is, uh, is really in what we, exactly what we had in mind when we put those regulations together?
To use the word exact is probably a bit of an overstatement, but this is getting a heck of a lot closer than where we were three years ago. You know, working with Quality and Derek on this project, you can just see some of the comments we made as far as, "Why don't we remove a lot to open a vista up to a five-acre lake and move that lot to another area?" And they said, "Yes, we'll, we'll do that." Why don't we, you know, when you look at Marsh Lane, where they've pulled lots away to open up access to both of those ponds, they did that on their own because they recognized the fact that if you don't open up those ponds, then nobody else has access to them.
Right.
You've got a fishing pier. That pier originally was on the Panama Canal. I advised him strongly, "Go meet with East Ascension Drainage to see if that's something we can do." It's not. So literally, they rotated it ninety degrees and put it on the, I think it's a fifteen or twelve-acre pond. I mean, that's a huge asset to a community with a lot of kids that love to fish in this region, you know? I, I, I think that these kinds of things, yes, doing a stage-three park allows them to reduce the acreage, but God bless America, what it does to that community when you have parks with features in them that kids can go and actually use, and I think that is a tremendous step forward.
Thank you.
This time we'd like to open the floor for public hearing. Any calls, any comments?
Yeah. Ryan Bersagay?
How y'all doing, council? Uh, I, first of all, I wanna thank y'all for allowing us the time to, uh, voice our opinion on, uh, filings four, five, and six of our neighborhood. Uh, as a lifelong resident of Ascension Parish, I watch this parish grow into what it is today. I've been a resident of Pelican Crossing since two thousand and five, and about, in the first filing, I'm about to be another one in filing, uh, three. Uh, I choose this location due to good restrictions in the area holding its property value. Two thousand and eight, phase two and three were created. We asked a developer for larger lots. He complied and grew the neighborhood into what it is today. Minimum lot sizes on the lake are about seventy-foot wide. We have estate lots, which are the bigger lots, hundred by two-twenty. Square footage ranges from eighteen hundred square foot minimum on the seventy-foot lots and twenty-three hundred square foot minimum on the estate lots. First filing lots range from a hundred and five to a hundred and ten foot wide, with seventeen fifty as a minimum restriction. Uh, by approving this developer to tie into our neighborhood, you're devaluing our property of current residence by allowing fifty-three-foot-wide lots they are proposing and sixty-four-foot lots they are proposing. Uh, with current building lines of ten-foot, like they discussed in their part, that equates to forty-three-foot-wide houses, which is nowhere near the size of current dwellings in the neighborhood. Uh, with, with forty-three foot, that's not very wide, guys. Think about it. Uh, like they talked about, oh, don't worry, the fifty-three-foot-wide lots are gonna be in the back of the neighborhood. So it's okay to put them in our neighborhood and hide them in the back so you get fifty-three-foot-wide lots so you can sell more lots in our neighborhood. That's just wrong. Uh, they need to go back to the drawing board. Lots should be equal to or larger than the current development. Restrictions should be the same as phase two and three. This includes aesthetic restrictions such as driveways on the same side, minimum square footage of at least eighteen hundred square foot, no vinyl siding, no garage doors facing the front of your neighborhood like that is currently in the neighborhood now. When a developer can conform to equal or better than the current successful neighborhood in place, they should bring it to you for approval. I do not believe the taxpaying citizens of this current neighborhood should have our property value decreased because of developer expands with lesser restrictions and lot sizes than the current established neighborhood. Thank you.
Good point.
Any further calls, any further comments?
Ryan Casto.
Ryan Casto, um, I live on sixty-four twelve Cowshata Drive and, I think it's phase three. Uh, I'll keep it short. I'm pretty much the same with what Ryan Bersagay had said too. I mean, my whole, I guess, my whole, what I'm worried about is the entrance. I hear y'all talk about roundabouts, uh, further from there, but what about, you know, you're talking about seven hundred cars trying to get out of one entrance. I, I mean, if it works, it works. I'm all for it, but my, I just don't wanna make our neighborhood any harder to get in and out. The parks are nice, but you know, the, the fishing pier is nice, but what happens if my value of my home drops thirty thousand? I mean, then that's what I'm worried about, and I think with a lot of residents are. I think we're willing to work with the developer on things, but I, I don't wanna lose money on the development as well as I'm worried about the traffic coming in and out of our neighborhoods. And who's to say our kids are playing in the front yard? There's actually two entrances to our neighborhood. If one gets crowded, they're gonna take that one chute, go all the way down the other end to try to get out. So, I mean, you already have cars that don't obey this, you know, speed limit now. Add seven hundred cars to that. Um, I guess that's just what I'm worried about. That's my concerns again. And I'm also concerned with the, the smaller, I guess, with the, losing the value of the home with the smaller lot sizes. The fifty-three foot, I just, I don't see that you can build a home on there that's gonna equal the value of what's currently in our neighborhood. So, uh, with that being said, I appreciate y'all's time, and again, hey, me as a resident, I'm willing to work with the builder. I just think we, you know, I think there's too many what-ifs. I think, what if this roundabout gets built? What if it gets, it can be brought to the drawing board, but when is it gonna be completed? Uh, you say designing and planning, but I mean, how long does that take before we actually see that? I know as residents, we've heard that. I mean, we hear it all the time. But where's it at? When's it gonna be there? Uh, who's gonna do it? Who's gonna pay for it? Uh, I mean, I, I just think that needs to be addressed prior to something getting approved if that's what they're going on trying to get this development passed with. Thank y'all.
Thanks.
Kevin Dust.
Good evening. Kevin Dust, four-one-one-eight-zero, Avoyles Avenue. I have, um, two main concerns. I moved into Pelican Crossing because it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. The additional traffic of six hundred cars trying to come in and out of Pelican Crossing. There's a three-way stop sign there. Um, you know, and like the gentleman before me, are they gonna start cutting through our neighborhoods trying to get to the other outlet? And my second concern is, I'm for expansion, but I believe it should be comparable to what phase two and phase three were for Pelican Crossing, not decreasing the size of the houses and, um, devaluing the whole, the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Chandler King.
How y'all doing today? My name's Chandler King. I live at sixty-two hundred Pelican Crossing Drive. This development will butt right up to my residence, and my concern is the same as all of my neighbors. The minimal lot size and the square footage of the smaller homes devaluing our property. If that happens, then we're locked in there. We can't go anywhere. We'll never be able to sell, move, or do anything without taking a loss on our home. And I think that generally is most of all of our concerns. And so I'm opposed to the minimal lot size and square footage of the smaller homes. Thank you.
Kelly Scott.
Uh, Kelly Scott, lot fifty-one and fifty, uh, fifty and fifty-one, Pelican Crossing. I have not started building my house. I've stopped because of this, uh, proposed plan. Uh, I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the, uh, the lot sizes. The lot sizes are just, uh, I've talked to several residents that the, the first filing, their, their lot width that they have presently, they're gonna have three backdoor neighbors, two to three. The, the width of those lots are totally way out of whack compared to what's presently there with the, even the first filing. The lot sizes don't even come where, no, there's like sixty lots that might come even close to equal in the square footage uh, of the property that even come close to meeting the minimum that we have in our subdivision. Uh, you know, we're anywhere from twenty thousand square feet to ten thousand five hundred square feet of property. That's our smallest lot size. Uh, these fifty-three-foot-wide lots, they're only like sixty-two hundred, sixty-three hundred, somewhere around there, square footage of property. Uh, I'm concerned trying to build a house there of any reasonable value, of any architectural design that looks reasonable and adheres to the standards that we have, as they have established in the subdivision now, that it's just not going to be economically feasible for me to build there if, if that's, that's what, what passes. Uh, concerned about the traffic. If they increase the lot sizes, the traffic impact. Concerned about the traffic. If they increase the lot sizes, the traffic impact will go down. The drainage, I think they've done a fairly reasonable job addressing that. The only issue that I see is possibly the first filing where the lots back up. They might need to do a little bit of drainage there if they haven't already addressed that. Everything else looks fine. I, I just wish that they would consider increasing the lot sizes and bring us something reasonable with square footage of the homes that they're gonna build to make it comparable to what is already there. Thank you.
Clint Andrews.
Good evening. I'm Clint Andrews, Park Plantation Drive, Pelican Crossing. I'm gonna echo really my neighbors and, and what they said. Basically, looking at the proposed plot, uh, they're proposing over 90 lots with 53, 53 feet in the street footage. We currently don't have any lot sizes that small. They're proposing over 90 lots with 64 foot of street footage. We don't have any lot sizes that small. Only four lots in the, in the existing subdivision have less than 150 feet of depth. The developer is proposing only 12 lots greater than 150 feet. Only 12 of the proposed 300 plus lots greater than 150 foot of depth. Currently, we have 76 lots with 99 foot street footage or greater, 90, 76 lots. They're not proposing any that wide. 100% of the lots currently in our subdivision have at least 10,000 square feet of area. According to my calculations, less than 4% of what they're proposing have that kind of a square footage. Finally, you know, just because a proposed plot meets the minimum requirements as identified in the land development code, doesn't make it a good idea. It doesn't make it consistent with what we have. And I ask that you please deny the proposed plot. Thanks.
Paul Nizo.
Good evening, Commissioner. Glad to be back with y'all again. I'm gonna be just the opposite of what everybody else had to say because I sat where you're sitting and I know what went into the development of the, of the code and ordinance and what we had in mind and what was the intent. And I believe that these developers have gone far and above what we had intended. They not only took it to the way and above the minimum requirements, but they took it upon themselves to go further. They met with residents who cared to meet with them. The meetings were announced on two different occasions. They answered all the questions we had, all the concerns. They addressed problems that we didn't even bring up, that we didn't foresee. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and say I'm asking you to approve it or deny it. I'm just gonna tell you, when you talk about meeting the requirements and going above and beyond what's necessary, I believe these developers have set the bar pretty high for future development at Ascension Parish by going the, the 10 extra yards that they went to do what they've done and what they're proposing. We all have concerns about traffic. That was my first question to them when we met the first time. What we're gonna do about the traffic coming through the subdivision that exists? We've tried to address that, I spoke to several councilmen. There are some ideas that are being pushed around to handle that situation that's acceptable to the parish. So there's answers that are coming to those problems. The, the traffic problem on 44, if they don't develop, it's not gonna get any better. It's gonna get worse. Their proposals for turning lanes in and out of our subdivision can only help. It can't hurt it. Unless somebody proposes now to do something about 44 and loose more, it may be eight or 10 years before we do anything at all, any kind of progress. And every day that we wait to, to address that problem pushes back the final outcome of repairing it and fixing it and addressing it several years further down the road. That's been the issue in this parish for so long, that we all know the problems. We all complained about the problems, but nobody wants to take that first step to get the ball rolling to correct the problem. And it's time we do something about it. They're setting the tone of addressing problems away from their development. I think this is what we're looking for, to ask the future developers that come in with these, all these developments that's gonna be required, to address the problems, not only what they're doing, but the impact it's gonna have further down the road. And so I ask you to carefully consider all of the issues before you make any decision one way or the other. Thank you.
Alan Dyson.
Thank you for letting me talk. I moved here about a year and a half ago from Terrebone Parish by choice. Work didn't bring me here. I own my own business. I could've lived anywhere. I chose to live with, say, 100 miles of New Orleans. I chose the Gonzalez area because we really like it. We think it has a lot to offer. We built our house in the neighborhood and it was because there was a certain standard and quality. I thought I was messing up. And because there was a certain standard and quality existed. And, you know, I have no problem with more homes because I just heard a number of 10,000 more in the future. And that's one of the reasons we moved here. Hopefully, property values will increase and it's just a good place to live. But when we start lowering the bar in a neighborhood like ours, I don't see how it can affect the property values. I mean, he just said they're gonna put them in the back and to me, that's just hiding, that's a solution of just hiding the problem, not really addressing it. And I don't really understand why the lots can't be and the standards of home can't just be maintained because I know the guy that built our house made a bundle and it, it's, it's, the money's there. And just making, bringing the bar down, we just talked about the bar also. Well, we're not raising the bar. We're lowering it seems like as low as we can get it. It's reasonably possible. And I'm not sure what the reason is. So I would really like you to consider at least, I don't know what the word would be, but addressing the minimum standard and lot size, home quality that's there now to keep the neighborhood and the growth to a certain standard that draws people like me. Not people that have to move here because they just got a job, but people that choose to move here, have their own business and, I mean, you know, I'd just really like y'all to consider that, to keep the standard where it's at.
Patricia Malasa. Harrington Delat.
Thank you all. Again, my name's Harrington Delat. I live at 6412 Pelican Crossing. My wife and I moved here from Kansas. I originally grew up in Ascension Parish, went to school at San Amo. Nine years ago, we opened up a branch in Gonzalez. National Trench Safety Minute, you probably driven by it on the interstate. We've recently built a $1.5 million establishment there. That brought me to Gonzalez. Pelican Crossing, we fell in love with it. It was a quiet neighborhood. Homes are very decent sized. After looking at the proposed plan, on the back of my lot, it's showing two homes. And from what I'm understanding, I don't know how true it is, but from what I'm hearing, it's two-story houses. Now, I don't know about you guys, but I mean, I have an 11-year-old girl and my wife stays on. And I don't want a two-story house behind my lot, looking in my backyard to see what my wife and daughter's doing every day. And I believe a majority of people here would agree. I think, I think the development, I think is a great idea. Again, I disagree with the lot sizes, the amount of money I paid for my house. If my wife and I decide to leave here in five to 10 years, I don't want to lose 40, 50, $60,000. The phase three on the backside of the subdivision, which ties into Highway 22, which they blocked off now. But when they opened that up, removed the concrete barrier, we've had break-ins in Pelican Crossing. My truck was broken in, window was broken, everything in it was stolen. Several neighbors in our neighborhood, because they had access to go through our neighborhood, several homes have been broken into. So when you, when you lower the quality of the homes from going from $100 a square foot to what we paid 150, $175 a square foot, I mean, you're gonna get riprap in your neighborhood. Driving through with 20-inch rims and loud music all out as other night, which I'm sure a lot of our neighbors are operators at plants. We don't want to hear that. I mean, if I want to live in a trailer park, I'll move to a trailer park. I mean, that's what you're talking. You're talking 125 to 140,000 dollar homes, which you can't even put an 80, an 80-foot trailer on these lots. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Rebecca Gardner.
Hey, my name is Rebecca Gardner and I live on a Voiles Avenue. First of all, would like to say thank you to the development for taking the initiative. And I know they've gone above and beyond of what is required in code. The same thing with our neighbors. I think we have the best neighborhood, not only in Ascension, but honestly, in South Louisiana. Born and raised around here and by far, we have a phenomenal neighborhood, great neighbors. I live in the middle of a Voiles Avenue and from my house down to the end of the road, we have, I don't know, we all just had another one, so like, I don't know, 24, 26 kids, from like 12 down. From the middle of a Voiles down. We know all our kids. We know our neighbors. We know our babysitters. Everybody knows everybody and we love it and we want to keep the integrity of our neighborhood. Obviously, I know long ago, the development plot was there to have something developed in phases four and five. We're all aware of that and there's traffic studies, yes. What we're really asking, I think, is to keep the integrity of our neighborhood and not have these squinched up little lots and we want to keep our value of our homes. And we ask you to please reconsider the size of these lots, which I think is a huge factor in what we're all looking at. This lot size, which y'all have seen, and the lot size that we have and the cost of our homes, square footage of the homes. We'd like to see larger lot sizes, more equivalent to what we currently have. We love our neighborhood and we want to work with the development. That's pretty much where we are. If we could please reconsider the lot sizes and bring it back. And we do appreciate the parks. A lot of us, obviously with kids, we have a lot of kids in our neighborhood. The parks, the pier are great selling points. I don't want that to be the main focus point and then that's kind of like your flash sale and then we lose thought of, oh, wait, the lot size is half of what we currently have. But wait, we have a fishing pier. I'd rather take a bigger lot size than a fishing pier. I mean, I appreciate it. And I'm not downplaying it. I'm not downplaying it. I appreciate it all, but I do want that to be considered and not get lost in the big park and the fishing pier and really concentrate on our home value and look at everything together. Thank you.
Bo Redden.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bo Redden. I live on Bay Saginette, Pelican Crossing, second filing. I've had a lot of conversations with Level Development and one of the first things that we brought up was the lot sizes and the house sizes. I was told that there wasn't anything we could do about that because that was the new ordinance that, that the Ascension Parish has established for new neighborhood requirements. That was one of, always one of the biggest concerns we had. We were told we couldn't do anything about it. We met with, I had met with Level Homes and I can't take anything from Level Homes to say bad. They have been great to work with. They've been over backwards. I, I don't think that there would be much, much better developer to come in and do this. As far as, I've heard the stories about, okay, it's gonna drop our property values and, and, and these houses are gonna sell for $150,000 and, and I've heard a lot of these types of things being said. The smaller houses in the back with the smaller lots, I've been told, and I can only go with what I've been told. I've been told these houses are gonna start selling for 220, 230. I don't like, I don't like the lot sizes. No one likes the lot sizes in the neighborhood. The amenities are nice and I don't know if there's anything that the developer, the developer can do from this point forward from an economical standpoint, if they make the houses bigger, if they make the lot sizes bigger, they, they run out of, it may, it may be uneconomical for them to come in and do it. I'm told that the parish set these rules about all the different lots and house sizes. I think the developer is willing to work with us to a certain extent on these lot, lot sizes and houses. And I heard what everything my neighbors had to say and I agree with a lot of it and, and they're concerned. And I have also been talking to my councilman. My councilman's been working with us. But at the end of the day, I think everyone understands that the neighborhood, that part of the neighborhood is going to be developed. And I think Level Homes are some people that we would, that I feel like is somebody that we can work with for the betterment of the, the, the whole subdivision. I don't know what we can do for the lot size and house size problems. And I would leave that up to y'all with y'all's knowledge to say, hey, what is the best thing to do from an economic standpoint, from a house and lot size standpoint? And what are the rules and regulations and what wiggle room do we have? Because I, like I said, and I want to, I want to reiterate, we did have meetings with them. I made phone calls to them. They have been over backwards to help us. And I've also been told, well, once this is approved, that's not gonna happen. Well, I have to take people at their word. So if there's anything you can do to, 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 to meet in the middle and help, I think it would go a long way and I think they would be willing to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
No further comments? We'd like to acknowledge, I understand there's another, Mr. Oliver Joseph?
No, doesn't want to speak.
No speak.
Okay.
I'm Councilman Cheeksnada and, and, and this is my district. And I'd like to give you a little background for the people that wasn't here for a long period of time. This is always, anytime there's a development, it's something that's very stressful and it's something that, you know, it's something new. And so if it would be up to me, I would love to go back to hunting rabbits right there like we did for a long time. Unfortunately, we did have progress. Man from Terrebone, a lot of these people are from out of town. We welcome you here. We want you to come to Ascension Parish. We're very proud of Ascension Parish. That being said, we have to figure out how we can do this, how we can make this. And, and, and the biggest thing we're getting feedback from is, you know, we want the people that move in and the new developments to put infrastructure, to do some things positive, to help make the road situation better, not just what it is. To go back a little further and it's been stated before, 15 or so years ago, when they put Pelican Crossing one, the overall master plan was to eventually get to the point where they doing this. So the parish and everyone since that time has been knowing this day would eventually be coming. And it's taken about 15 years. It'll probably take 10 or 12 years for that next filing to, to fill up. It started out on Pelican Crossing one. They built and had fairly large lots with open ditches. And from the very beginning, there was flooding problems. For the people that lived there, there was flooding problems and it was something that needed to be addressed. And what ended up happening when Pelican Crossing two and three came and they wanted their filings to do, we asked that they try to keep the, the biggest thing was to assist with the flooding. And so they did. They took in, and that's why the ponds are so large. Instead of doing a 10-year design, they ended up doing a 25-year design for the water storage. In order to do that, they reduced some of the sizes of the lots to what we have now on Pelican Crossing two and three. And what all of these people are living in now, we had we had the same type of meeting when, when they had those filings, and the people in Pelican Crossing one didn't want to become because the lots were too small. So that's what the involvement was there, and we made a trade-out. And since that time, the drainage in Pelican Crossing one has been significantly improved. And except for a blocked ditch during the, the number of storms that took us a while to find, the drainage has been good in, in Pelican two and three, and it's been fixed since that time. So we started meeting with new people when they came, as soon as we found out, Beau had called, and a few other people had called, and we started meeting. And we gave them a whole list of demands. And biggest thing was traffic. If you try to get on forty-four, I live off of Luce Moore, it's a nightmare. It's not gonna get any better. We got people coming from Livingston Parish, and, but, we wanted to make a demand that the developer, if he comes in Ascension Parish, do something about the traffic. We got them to put some turning lanes in and actually get off of Highway forty-four before most of the merging happens, which is a significant thing. We got them to do another turning lane, that's what was required by DOTD. They also had agreed to, to do some volunteer impact fees of the houses, even though the parish doesn't have impact fees. They were gonna put some impact fees on each lot to go towards the transportation that the parish would be able to do, and to actually commit to designing a roundabout on the entrance, on Luce Moore and forty-four, which would reduce the amount of time it takes to go through that intersection in the future, which is a significant thing. In speaking with the, the people in Department of Transportation, they said that would be a significant thing that would move up the time it would take for them to build a roundabout there and to improve that, because the design is what holds you up in the, in the requirement of, of right-of-way. So that would, impact fees would help with right-of-way, that would help on design. So we did that. The other thing we found out was there was a, a number of complaints in the subdivision with the existing homeowners association, and the pools, and the pumps, and aerators, and all of that, and maintaining the area, and we asked them to get involved. They said they would be glad to combine it all. They would, they would take the homeowners association dues and make up for it, whatever it took to get things going. And they was, they're still looking at working with the developer they have now, the existing one, to try to bring a, one common pool to everybody. They also, we, we also asked that they do something, since they're gonna have a canal, a pretty canal there, to do something for the people that came in in the afternoon and wanted to go canoeing or boating or anything like that. So they were willing to put a, a type of dock there. They were also willing to make the ponds where they're more conducive for the people to come in and have access to them and do the fishing. They also was conducive, because we were very concerned about the existing Pelican Crossing, number one, staying right behind them, and we expressed to them how concerned we were about them taking the water off of that property. And so we was assured that so far, the information that I have is that it, they would be protected from the drainage coming into there. I don't like the lot sizes being small, I wish they'd be bigger. I didn't like the lot sizes being as small as they were when Pelican Crossing two and three came in compared to one. But it's turned out to be a very nice subdivision, as everybody here says. And, and we took criticism at that point. I, I think if we hold them to what they're saying, is that they're talking about coming in with two-hundred-and-twenty to two-hundred-forty thousand dollar range for entrance on the houses, all the way up to three-fifty and four-hundred thousand, unless something changes there. Public commitment on that was there. That's what we looking for now. So we trying to get as many things to protect the existing homeowners that we have now. We know there's trouble with the homeowners association problems that have been going on back and forth, they're willing to help there. So all of these things are a combination of, if they're gonna do the things that they're doing, they have to have more lots, or the economics doesn't work. So if we're gonna get pa, traffic improvements, that's the give and take that we're gonna have. So it's one of the decisions you guys need to take a look at and, and decide what you're gonna do, whether the benefits outweigh the negative. And, you know, I appreciate you taking a look at it and, and making the best decision possible. It's, it's an impossible decision. So I do, I, I am satisfied with the process, that they did get the people involved, and they were trying to do some things, and quite frankly, I gave them a list of things, and I thought they were gonna do two or three of them, and they were willing to do just about everything. So I was satisfied with that. There's any improvements we can make, hopefully we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Councilman Shexnider, I, I personally thank you for shedding some light on the subject matter and bringing some things to our attention that I was not aware of, and it helps us understand the situation that is before us now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council.
I have a question about this, and I don't know if it's directed to the developer or directed to staff, but it seems to me, from listening to all the comments, that the biggest concern is the lot size of these smaller lots in the back, and what's, what that's going to do to devalue property. And from what Councilman Shexnider just said, it seems, and I could be wrong about this, but what I'm hearing is that, well, we got all these extra benefits, a twenty-five thousand, or twenty-five-year retention ponds, we get the roundabout at Luce Moore Road, we have a fishing pier, we have all these nice stuff that the developer is willing to do, and kind of the quid pro quo, so that they can make a profit off of this, is that we'll let them do smaller lots in the back. And part of that is also to turn the garages sideways, so you don't have a lot of garages facing the street, or a row of garages facing the street that dominate the house. Is that, is that the, the negotiations that went on, like, well, we can give you these smaller lots in the back, kind of all variance, but in, in exchange, we're gonna get these ponds, these green spaces, roundabout down the road that does, that is really off-site? Is that, is that where that, is that how it came down?
Nope.
Okay.
So the current code allows them to build fifty-foot lots. They're zoned residential medium. They're zoned three units an acre. And the code that this commission and the council passed allows them to build fifty-foot lots. We do not require it, it allows it. When we went down in lot size, that's where we started requiring sidewalks, requiring parks, requiring, requiring trees. So where the, the given take are, is it, it's not really on us anymore. It's them negotiating with the adjacent HOA, with the adjacent residents, with them saying, here's what our goal is, our goal is obviously to make money. In order to make money, we need to get to a certain number of units. And in order to upvalue those units, we're building parks. We're improving traffic with turn lanes. We're, you know, building amenities within those parks. So the code allow, we, there's no give and take, the code allows what they're proposing. We didn't have to give or take anything.
All right, well, that brings me to my second question on this, because one, one gentleman said, just because the proposal meets the minimum requirements that's set forth in the land development code, doesn't necessarily make it a good idea. But if it meets the requirements, and this may be a better counsel for, better question for our legal counsel, if it meets the requirements, we're not the legislative body, we don't make the laws as we go along. We're here to interpret this and make sure it meets the requirements. Is there any way we can deny and say, well, we just don't like it? Because we've heard all these people be concerned about these smaller lots, but it meets the law, but we just don't like it, so we're gonna deny it?
No, there's, no.
We don't have, I don't think we have room in there to make that decision.
It's not discretionary on your part.
It's not discretionary.
And that, and that, that, I think hits to the heart of the matter. If they've met the total requirements, then, and, and I appreciate what everybody's got to say, but I don't know how we as a body can act outside of the law.
Can I say a couple things? Can I say a couple things?
Certainly.
One thing I like to say is, there seems to be a misconception that size is quality. I mean, I've seen, I've seen a million-dollar home on a smaller lot than a fifty-foot lot. I mean...
No, in Baton Rouge, they do.
Sure.
So... We, we've addressed, and we're not gonna put a million-dollar home on a lot, no.
Take control.
So...
Let me... Can we, can we, can we have, the gentleman has the floor. He's trying to wrap up, complete his presentation, can we please allow him to speak? Thank you.
There was a couple mentions that we're hiding the fifty-foot lots. We're not hiding the mis, fifty-foot lots, we placed them there strategically. We placed them there because of this misconception. We wanted to create as much distance as possible between the smaller lots and the existing Pelican Crossing. That was done for, that was done on purpose. Not to hide, but in order to, to buffer, if you will, in order, because of that misconception, in order to keep those homes back there. Those are gonna be, those are a nice lot, they have some, some lake lots, they have some non-lake lots, and things like that. You know, some people said that the original filings didn't have anything less than ten thousand square feet. Well, at that time, that was the minimum. Ten thousand five hundred square feet was the minimum, a seventy-by-one-fifty lot was the minimum. And that's what was done at that time, was the minimum lot size. With the new code revisions, the minimum lot size decreased, and requirements on the developer increased, such as parks, sidewalks, and, and so forth. Net developable area, what you can develop and what you can do. So this meets the code. If this would have been done two years ago, I guess, it would be ten thousand five hundred square-foot lots, because that's what was required by the code. But you wouldn't have the amenities, or you might, but you didn't have to have these type of amenities. The traffic, we've, we've addressed that, I think we've kind of ran that one into the ground. We are gonna offset traffic impacts in this area and beyond. And I think, you know, we, we've discussed with the homeowners that was at those meetings about the minimum square footage pricing, and I'm not the developer, I'm not the home builder. And so, but we did talk about minimum, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty, two-forty thousand-dollar homes, things like that, on these smaller lots. We did talk about architectural features being consistent with the original filings. We don't, this developer from what I understand, doesn't have vinyl siding and things like that. They build a quality home. And so that's what we hear tonight, asking for approval on this preliminary plot that meets the code.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just want to make a comment. Oh, sure, Councilman.
From the beginning, they met the minimum requirements. We, we came to them to, and, and I told them that we still have an issue on traffic. For general health, safety, and welfare in that area, to put a big subdivision would hurt the general health, safety, and welfare. And I, I feel like, and Ricky felt like, very much so, that we could go to them and use that as a reason to deny them from putting a subdivision that just met the minimum requirements, because of the traffic situation and things like that. And, and, and I said, you know, if you want to do that, we want you to do this, we want you to impact fees, we want you to do that. And they said yes. So in effect, the argument that we were gonna use to say that, you know, that, you know, you shouldn't come here, they were willing to do. And I'm trying to think, Ricky, is there any other thing that we were attempting to try to get them?
They started at the minimum, and everything they've done has pushed them away from the minimum standard. And I, I can't argue with, are they doing anything contrary to the code? Because they've, in my opinion, moved above and beyond. But I've met with the resident, I've talked to them, I've gotten the opinion of character, and home value, and depreciation, and all that other stuff. And, and I am probably contrary to legal opinion, because I do believe health, safety, and welfare does come down to you guys, and you guys do have the power. If you were just a rubber stamp authority, we wouldn't need to bring items to you, we would just do it at staff level. So there, there is a conflict there as, as to how much power you guys do have, but I do believe they're above the minimum. They've, they've gone above and beyond what the code requires them to do. But that, that's not to say that their concerns aren't valid.
And, 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 and one of the things that we've asked them to do more amenities, because it does drive up home prices. And so that, that's the one thing that we have, that we can protect people that invested so much, is to try to keep the home values up high. So we tried to do whatever we could do to maintain the home values for everybody, so they could, they could keep their prices up.
You guarantee that in writing?
I can't guarantee anything. But we, we, we...
Don't say it unless you go write it down.
We can only, we can only give them, you know, what the minimum was, we can only guarantee what the minimum is, and they were willing to go beyond that. Now, we, we need to hold them to that.
Councilman Shexnider, I have a question, and you might have been involved when they did all the different filings at Pelican Point across the street. There's a lot of small lots that are mixed in at Pelican Point, too, there's some nice houses we're built on. I mean, did we run into these same?
Yes, you did.
Did everyone know when they bought into Pelican Point along the main avenues, and like Patio Court and things like that, and all these different courts that were built were gonna be such small houses? How has that affected house prices? I mean, have we seen anything? I mean, I'd imagine they built some nice houses, they're probably starting around the two-twenties, two-thirties.
There's some, there's some houses in, there's some houses in Pelican Point that, that are not comparable to what's in, in Pelican Crossing. There's some houses that are very much above and beyond.
Yeah.
There's a big mix there.
Right.
It appears to be, you know, people move where economically they feel comfortable. This is a, this is something that is, is never gonna be a, a absolute correct answer. We don't have the power in a subdivision to guarantee in writing that they, that they have to build this house at this value, and so on and so forth. That's a planned unit development, which is guaranteed that they have to do that, and so...
A contractual agreement that they could maybe enter with an HOA?
The other thing that they were willing to do is, we had a big thing about going through construction through the subdivision, and they're willing to open up a, a, a road, or a contractor road for, during construction, when weather permits, on the, on, on the, right there by the Mud Lake. So when weather permits, they will have that, that was a big concern that they had, and they, they were willing to do that.
Right now, they're allowing a density of three units per acre. I think now this has them down to, y'all are about two-point-four, two-point-five units per acre.
Yeah.
That's because of the increased amenities that they have.
Well, it's also the ponds, the lakes, the amenities, and that kind of stuff.
Which y'all are required to do, which y'all went a little bit more with the amenities.
Yes.
Which...
No, I just wanted to say something about this, too. The, the irony is that it was our intention, when we recommended and, and the council approved the changes to the subdivision regulations, was to make nicer subdivisions. Now, we think this is a nicer subdivision. I, I can tell you that in California, Denise and I lived in a, on a fifty-foot wide lot, a hundred-foot deep, a little two-story, fifteen-hundred-and-sixty-one-square-foot house, that was beautiful. It did have a front garage, we would have preferred, you know, a side entrance garage. The landscaping was gorgeous, I would, it was not on a lake, it, it had no view. We loved it, and I wish we could find it here. And the fact is, we can't find that, that house here. We, we would love to downsize from where we are now, on a smaller lot, where I wouldn't kill myself every weekend, taking care of the house and, and the yard and pool and everything we have, and find something like that, we can't, I've been talking to developers, I've talked to you, about a retirement community here, because there are people in this community who want to downsize onto it. But we can't find anything really, really nice we want to move to. And I'd like to see something like this done that's really very, very nice. Now, this, we caused, we, the, the arguments the developers made against our changes that we proposed last year was that it was gonna cost them a fortune. They were gonna lose money. And it did cost them a lot to do this. They cannot afford to give these lots away. Those lots per square foot are gonna cost more than my lot costs, per square foot. And they cannot afford to give these lots away, or to give houses away. They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to have a fairly substantial, very nice, expensive home on even the smallest lots, for them to make any money on this, on this subdivision, because of what we required here. So that's, this is my comment.
Well, the other thing is, you know, everybody's back, asking for a guarantee, nothing is guaranteed. I've seen, you know, mobile homes on an acre lot, and I've seen, you know, nice houses on a small lot. It just depends on the... It just depends on the market and it depends on what's gonna be built. These amenities and, and off-site traffic improvements and the, uh, you know, everything that these developers are putting into this development is gonna require them to get top dollar for, and for the return. They have to, in order to recuperate their investment, they have to be top-notch. And so, uh, again, just here to answer any que, any other questions y'all might have.
Do we know, and Lindsay, maybe you could answer this, but I mean, I know you're involved with HOA and stuff in your neighborhood. This is the, this is, this is all gonna be Pelican Crossing. So I mean, that's filing one through six is Pelican Crossing. Do they have to adhere to the same bylaws and restrictions that they had as an entire neighborhood? Do you think there's some kind of?
I don't know if the entire property was, was bound by that. It's, it sounds like there were two different developers for one through three and then four through six, so.
I mean, as far as like architectural amenities, right now, all we have is their word that, yeah, they're not gonna have vinyl siding. And if they had an overall set of restrictions that establish that, that they would have to adhere to, I mean, I don't know how we could proceed to make that happen now or if that's even possible.
I think the developer here is saying that they're willing to, to work with the other HOA. They're just not having any, any success.
Would they be able to put stuff like that in writing? I mean, try to get the restrictions as close to possible as the other ones, minimum square footages?
I'm sure it's possible, it's just not something that.
But that's just one man's word. Right. Right, that's kind of what I'm asking. If we could legally bind the restrictions from maybe the first three filings and legally bind those restrictions to make them for the. We can't as our body. We can't, that's right, yeah. We, we, we don't have any authority to do that. You're right about that.
No further comments?
I have a question for Ricky. If the developer, since this is a phase and not a filing, it's really separate, is it not?
Yes, sir. The original Pelican Crossing preliminary plat did not subdivide this property. So we, as the parish, don't consider it a filing. We consider it a phase. So this area is a completely new subdivision that's attached to another subdivision.
Wow. That's a big difference, those two words, phase versus filing.
So if the developer decided just to cut it off, he could still do whatever, as long as he met the minimum standards, he could pretty much do what he wanted without all the amenities you've.
No, he's gotta follow our, our new regulation.
But not at the level they've done. They could decide, as long as they met the minimum.
They could do vinyl siding?
They could do what they want.
They could all jump in the pool?
The amenities, the amenities outlined on the preliminary plat has to be done.
Yes.
Okay? Now, the architectural standards that you're talking about is not part of this approval. But the, but the amenities, the gazebos, the walk trails, the parks, the stage three, all of that stuff is part of this, so it has to be built.
But you didn't have to do the traffic. You wouldn't have to necessarily agree to a roundabout design and those kinds of things.
The approval can be based upon the execution of this agreement and then it has to be.
I'm just saying that there, some of the issues, they didn't have to go this far. They could have done something independent.
We made the decision, was this originally submitted in October?
Yes.
We made the decision back in October that we were not gonna support this project unless they addressed off-site traffic issues. And between October and today, we've been working on these agreements. So if they weren't interested in satisfying any of the existing Pelican Crossing subdivisions demands, their access is still coming through that subdivision regardless of, of desires because that's, that is what it is. That's the only access for this piece of property. The negotiations that have occurred between the developer and the residents that participated in those meetings are outside of the purview of this commission and this staff. We do not care about architecture from the parish's perspective because that's not our job. We care about the lots and the setbacks, the open space, the sidewalks, the right-of-ways. We, we're not in the business of caring about architecture. If this was a pod, you could put architectural standards in the pod and that'd be one more thing for us to have to monitor and track and all that. That's what we did for Keystone. But this is not that. This is a subdivision.
To be clear, the developer is bound by what has been proposed and agreed upon?
Yes, sir. Well, when it's approved.
Question? Yeah. Is, uh, is there a way, um, any possible way that all of the filings, all of the phases could eventually come under one HOA and one common set of restrictions?
There is, but like I said. You'd get these people involved who, who are going to create some legal language that says Pelican Crossing one, uh, you're gonna have this representation on a board. Pelican Crossing two and three, you're gonna have this representation. Pelican Crossing four, five and six, you're gonna have this. Somebody in the legal world's gonna have to create language. They're all gonna have to agree to it. They're gonna have to form, that's outside us. We don't deal with HOA restrictions. We don't care.
About these issues. We were worried about the building restrictions and the houses being built. And I know the lot sizes and the, um, the house sizes are gonna be smaller than what we have today. And it sounds like that that was some of the minimum restrictions that were required, that they met, that y'all required. So the approach that we took in talking to the developers is that if we can't get that, let's go to the developer and say, okay, let's talk about what you're gonna build. Let's talk about our, our restrictions and let's talk about, build something that's comparable to what we have and, and build a neighborhood that's comparable to our restrictions. And I understand, and they told me that we don't have to do that, but we're willing to do it and we think it's a good idea. So it's possible to have a second and third filing with four, five and six. I think it would be a little more difficult for the first filing to do because of their homeowners dues and they've been there a lot longer. So that would be a little bit more difficult and they're not as open to it. And I don't even know if that's the right thing to do, but, um, they did say that they were willing to work with us to meet our restrictions from a building standpoint and that, um, they would be more than happy to do that. And I heard some questions in the back. People said, well, you don't have that in writing. You don't know that's gonna happen. I don't have that in writing. And just like I said before, I have to get a feeling when people talk to me and tell me the things that they're gonna do, I have to take them at their word because I can't automatically take it, take it, take it that they're lying to me. So those are some of the things we talked about. And, and like I said, um, if they continue to work with us from that aspect and y'all are telling us that they met, met the minimum requirement on lot sizes and such, and if they continue to work with us the way they've done before prior to this thing getting approved, those people have said, well, once it gets approved, they're not gonna talk to us anymore. I don't know that to be fact. I have to assume that they're gonna continue, they're gonna continue, continue working with us. So those are some of the discussions that we had when we did have our meetings. And, um, hopefully, if this thing does get approved, we'll continue forward with that kind of negotiations and, 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 um, working together as a team for the betterment of both neighborhoods. So, and I just, I heard a lot of discussions about it and I was in on a lot of the meetings and I, I did meet with them a lot. So I just wanted to clear that part of it off.
Is the developer an Ascension Parish entity, company, owner?
Baton Rouge.
Baton Rouge.
Does he have a track record? Has he done other developments in Ascension Parish?
He has done several in Ascension, many in Baton Rouge, South Carolina, North Carolina and Florida. He's a well-known builder, developer, and, uh, they do have a, a good reputation.
Can I make one further comment? Please. If you are gonna consider approving this, I would, I would strongly urge you to ask them to call it something other than Pelican Crossing because it's not gonna be the same. Call it Pelican Shadows, something different, but this, that, that's not gonna be Pelican Crossing.
There was another comment right there?
As far as the minimum requirements? Saying the minimum requirements are X, Y and Z. Can we rewrite that code?
Staff?
About a year.
That's a council issue.
Yeah. It took us years.
Do you have a comment, response to that?
What would it take to change the code? It would take an act of this commission and an act of the council to revise the subdivision regulations to, to increase the minimum lot size. Sure, everything's feasible, you know, four months, five months down the road, we could, it can be done. You need to see if there's the political willpower to do that.
We've asked, and we've already improved the code considerably.
Any no further comments? At this time then?
What is, what is the, you're talking about the construction interest? Why can't that be a permanent interest?
Eric, would y'all have access? Where's the construction interest?
That is, that is actually gonna, is under an existing energy servitude. I mean, we're, we're being able to use that, but we can't, that can't be, can ever consider a public right of way or anything like that.
At this time, propose to close public area. Can I get a motion?
I'll move for approval. In accordance, in accordance with the, uh, the stipulation of the, um, agreement that's been drafted.
Moves for approval, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposition? So noted, the motion passes unanimously. Staff and engineer report? Staff report, engineer report?
Give them, give them a minute.
Okay. Currently I have eight subdivisions in review, seven commercial properties in review. Currently under construction, we have approximately, it looks like twenty-four total with about two thousand one hundred and seventy-five lots. So a lot of additional ones coming in and in construction at least one, ten commercial ones under construction right now. That's all I have.
With the development in Conway, do we spend any time talking to the folks that are involved in that?
The parish has not because it's entirely within the city limits. Jason and I have begun having some discussions with the city engineer and DOTD with respects to the corridor and, and how we can look at overall improvements. But with respect to that development, we have not. They actually were the developer who were proposing the zoning change that got pulled from the agenda at our next meeting. And so you would have had a opportunity to meet them, but.
And they're the same group that developed River Ranch?
Yes, sir.
In Lafayette. And those lots are very small.
Very small and very expensive.
Very expensive.
No further comments, staff report? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Moved.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Motion is set.